Good morning and Happy New Year to all.
Happy New Year.
It's exciting to welcome my two colleagues here. John and Luis Carlos, welcome to the Board. And I'm super happy and excited and I know we have good things to come. I see former Supervisors Reese and the staffs. Thank you for your service, sir. Just a little housekeeping. Please put your phones on silent out of courtesy. And if you wish to speak on call to the public, there's slips in the back. And you will get three minutes to speak on call to the public. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order. And Mr. Bob Mary, will you lead us in pledge, sir?
Yes, sir.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with justice and. At this time, I also want to welcome all and our elected officials. There's a bud here, Sheriff Ms. Moreno, Superintendent of Schools, Mr. Velazquez, welcome. I hope I didn't miss anybody. And with that said, Item B, adoption of the agenda. I'd like to entertain a motion to adopt the agenda and allow, which will allow Chair to deviate.
So move. A second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. At this time, I'd like to deviate to Item H1. Action items. Discussion possible action to approve rotation schedule for Chairman and Vice Chairman of the Board of Supervisors for the period of 16 months each term to total a three term. And just for the record, Santa Cruz County Board of Supervisors, 2025 through 2028. First term will be January 7th through April 30th, 2026. Chairman yours truly, Vice Chairman John Fanning, Member Luis Carlos Davis. And then second term will be May 1st, 2026, through August 31st, 2027. Chairman, the Honorable John Fanning and Vice Chairman Luis Carlos Davis. And yours truly will be the member. And then the third term, September 1st, 2027, December through December 31st, 2028. Chairman Luis Carlos Davis, Vice Chairman yours truly and Member John Fanning. Any questions? Any discussion, gentlemen? At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion.
I move that we move forward with your discussion of first term, second term, and third term. Chairman and Vice Chair Rotation. A second.
Okay. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay. We'll go ahead and move back to Item C, Call to the Public. Our first speaker is the Honorable my fellow Velazquez. Morning, sir. And Happy New Year.
Chairman Moletta, Supervisor Davis and Supervisor Fanning. The community. I'd like to wish all a Happy New Year and wish all the best of luck on this new journey that you are about to undertake. We look forward to you coming and visiting our office at the 1904 Historic Courthouse and learning about all the stuff that we are doing up there. I'd like to introduce my staff who's here today. I have Maya, our Chief Deputy. I have Terry, who's in charge of or director of my mental and behavioral health, early childhood professional development, and also my robotics and techno chicas after school programs. I have Kerry Munoz, who is the Director of the College and Career Readiness Program for GEAR Up. I have Melissa Gallegos, Los Padres Home Visitation Program Director for Early Childhood Education. I also have Lisette, who's become the Director of our literacy bus, our Santa Cruzer, which will be visiting throughout the community. We are currently going out for two grants. And I'd like to inform you about them when you get a chance. Again, I extend this invitation. As we move forward, there are a lot of projects that we want to get done at the 1904 Courthouse. I want to extend my thanks to our county manager and Chief Deputy and Legal Counsel, as well as our HR Director. I also want to thank our former Supervisors, Mr. Reese and Mr. Bracker for all their support throughout the years. Again, I look forward to working with you and I wish you all the best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have Adele Post.
Good morning. Thank you. Supervisor Davis, Chairman Moletta, Vice Chair Fanning. Happy New Year. Thank you again for this chance. I know you get to see me each meeting, but I'm the one delegated from our family to be able to speak publicly and come and address you and make sure that our voice is heard. As you might recall, this is in regard to our family cemetery and chapel located in Lokeel, Arizona that's caught up in a mess of properties that was once owned by the former Treasurer. I bring a quick message. I know the Board often gets problems brought to them, but I bring a problem with a solution. So as I mentioned, the message is that we as a family and many of this county and the state and surrounding areas outside of Arizona have proven and by the collection of signatures on our petition, both an online petition and a written petition, we have over 3,000 signatures gathered thus far. It shows the concern about this piece of special history, this property that exists in Santa Cruz County. The petitioners join us in requesting support of an effort to allow this treasured land to remain within the family. So the solution, I can tell you that officially our organized nonprofit called the Della Ose Family Cemetery Foundation is complete and legally established with all requirements by law. And so I ask for a decision hopefully to be made soon and encourage the Board to discuss this with the receivership that a transfer be made to this nonprofit, that we can bring peace and settlement to a disturbing situation. We stand ready to answer any questions and provide any information that's needed. We request and hope that maybe some community, more open communication can be done both ways. I just feel like I come here and speak and then I don't have a lot of information to always share with family about true progress of what's going to happen. So thank you for your time. We are available. We look forward to letting the dust settle with the holidays and hopefully being able to understand what are some plans and future movements for this and for our family. Thank you.
Thank you, Adele. And for the record, just so you know, because it's not an agenda item, we can't freely discuss it with you.
Understand.
But I understand staff has been in communication with you.
Somewhat. Can I just say that somewhat? I would love if it was more, more open communication. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And one other personal item. I want to go ahead and recognize our Treasurer, Alejandro Paz. And Alejandro, I'm personally really proud of what you've done. And you know, you've been a true champion. And I want to wish you a Happy New Year, sir. Next, we have Mr. Rich Bowman.
Good morning, Rich Bowman, Tubac. I just want to take a minute to congratulate our two new Supervisors, Mr. Davis and Mr. Fanning, and also my good friend, Mr. Moletta, who was reelected. So in the vein of harmony, I hope that this team works together well. I know you've got some financial challenges that you're looking at based on events that occurred recently. But for the sake of all the citizens, please work harmoniously and do the best you can to make Santa Cruz County the kind of place we're all proud to live in. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. And Sheriff, did I not recognize you? I apologize if I didn't. Happy New Year. Mr. Velazquez.
Sorry, no, it's not in classroom. Could I just, I forgot where my.
You did raise your hand, though.
Yeah. My net account and that is.
Welcome. Our courts are well represented as well. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to come up and speak on call to the public?
Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board. I wasn't going to speak, but I have to respond to the request for a gift of public funds to a family. Because somebody in that family got that $530,000. So if they want the property, they need to buy it back, get the person who got the money, whether it was ill-gotten gains or not. It would be a double hit on this county to give up that property that our taxpayer dollars illicitly purchased. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. We'll go ahead and move on to current events. Supervisor, Vice Chairman Fanning.
Good morning. Thank you. First of all, I want to thank the voters for allowing me to represent you. I will do my best to represent this county, District 3 as well as the county. So thank you so very much. I will work hard. Second of all, I went to a meeting approximately a month ago and I'm going to be traveling up to Phoenix this Friday to meet with the Rural Water Working Coalition Group. And I'm excited to represent our community in making sure that our water is high quality and quantity. And lastly, under the consent agenda, Ms. Patricia Barasa Preciado, I'm going to say what a great job she did as an educator for 35 and a half years in this county. Any chance that I had to work with Patricia was always done with professionalism. And we're sorry to see her go, but I commend her for wanting to spend time with her family, her grandkids. So we will certainly miss her. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Luis Carlos Davis.
Okay, so I wrote something and I couldn't print it, so you're going to have to be patient with me because I'm going to read it from the phone. So first of all, I'm very happy to see a lot of like familiar faces. Mr. Velazquez, I see my principal from high school, Dr. Valona, so many people, you know? So first of all, I would like to begin congratulating my two fellow Supervisors, Mr. Moletta on his reelection and Mr. Fanning on reelection to this Board. I look forward to working with both of you. I would also like to express my heartfelt gratitude to my family, to my wife, Shenfen, and our two children, Zoe and Leon. Also want to thank the Romero and the Davis family, along with the rest of the community for their support during my election, especially District 1. But let me be clear, I will represent everybody, whether you voted for me or not. The door will always be open to all. And I'm committed to serving the entire community with dedication and respect. It's no secret that Santa Cruz County has been, has had a difficult year. Our constituents are rightly upset and have lost confidence in this Board and our fellow elected officials. This is, this is both obvious and understandable. I say this not to point fingers or assess blame, but to assure our constituents that we will do everything in our power to ensure the wrongs that occurred do not happen again and restore confidence in the Board, in this Board, county government, and selected officials. I would like to take this opportunity to set forth some goals that I hope as a Board we can address during the upcoming term. I want to emphasize that this is not an excess, just a list for me. I'm sure my fellow Supervisors will add to this list. I'm confident that we will work together to find the best outcome for Santa Cruz County. And I would like to start out with like six goals. Goal number one, we have to implement serious checks and balances to ensure that monies belonging to Santa Cruz County and other entities are properly handled and legally spent. We must hold those who do not follow protocols accountable. We cannot allow what has occurred to happen again. The damage to the county's reputation and standard is immeasurable. Due to these actions of one and the enactors of others, the whole county and many innocent people have suffered. We must pledge to work together to fix this. Goal number two, we must do all we can to develop smart lasting economic growth in this county. We must take an active role and think outside the box. We cannot depend or expect others to do what is our responsibility. The opportunities are there. We must actively undertake the necessary steps to attract and bring businesses and clean industry. We have the space, the workforce, infrastructure, support, and I've seen a lot of talent in this at the county level already. Economic growth is within our control. Goal number three, we must truly work with our fellow elected officials of other jurisdictions. And by this, any school districts, fire departments, the city, the state governments. Let's acknowledge that we share and serve the same constituents. We must consolidate and share our resources where we legally can. The money we can save by not duplicating our efforts is untold. We're all working with public funds. We should approach this wisely and responsibly. Make it every dollar count. Goal number four, our community is not a rich community. We must do all we can to lower the tax burden imposed on our constituents. We must pledge to do so. We can be, this can be accomplished through smart budgeting, spending responsibly, actively seeking fellow and state grants, and consolidating our efforts with other jurisdictions. We should not question whether this can be done. Our attitude should be, how much can we lower that burden? We must find ways. Goal number five, we need to take care of our employees. We expect much from them. They are representatives in the relationship and dealings with the public. Their work is on public display. We must provide them with adequate training, resources, support, and compensation. We cannot expect more from them than what we ourselves are not willing to do. Goal number six, I would like to consider moving our meetings from the morning to the evenings. We must make it easier for our constituents to attend our meetings. We must give them the opportunity to participate so they may see how the government should operate and can operate in the open. This will go a long way in restoring the trust and confidence in our county government and in this Board. I realize that I'm new and I hope I do not sound overly naive. But sincerely, I believe that we can accomplish these things that we believe we can. I believe we need to shoot for the stars. And if we shoot for the stars, I believe we will accomplish what we want. So thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Okay, we'll go ahead and move on to Item D2. Mr. Manager.
Mr. Chair, Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Looking forward to working with all of you guys in 2025. And congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Moving on to Item E, Department Reports and Activities. One, Finance, Cash, and, excuse me, Investments, Expenditures, and Revenue Reports. Mr. Chalas, good morning and Happy New Year, sir.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Happy New Year. Welcome, Mr. Fanning. Welcome, Mr. Davis. The cash and investment report with the general fund in overall balance of $22,324,677, with an investment amount of $50,922,528. The road fund has an overall balance of $5,918,278, with an investment amount of $7,849. Blood Control District Fund has an overall balance of $2,798,801, with an investment amount of $296,651. Jail District Fund has an overall balance of $4,842,187, with an investment amount of $3,237,944. Total total fund, with an investment amount of $21,503,497, for an estimated end of month balance of $13,324,795.
Any questions, gentlemen? Thank you, sir. Any other departments wishing to?
Good morning, Chairman Moletta. Welcome to Supervisors Fanning and Davis. I don't think I would go over the three minutes on call to the public, but just in case I'm coming and talking during the portion for department updates, just in case I go over the three minutes, but that's not my plan. As I expressed at the last meeting, thank you so much for the service of the outgoing Supervisors, Manuel Reese and Bruce Bracker. And thank Manuel Reese for being here during kind of this transition period. I know there's a learning curve for the new Board members. I'm very excited about the possibilities for this year and for the possibilities for this Board. I know there is a learning curve here and I'm going to just briefly give you a snapshot of the Sheriff's Office. We can also, in future meetings, do complete presentations on our different divisions, on the jail, on our CID, our detectives, on patrol, on our records division, on our dispatch. As you will notice on the agendas, we are one of the biggest agencies, if not the biggest, kind of rivaling the courts. And you will notice a lot of the agenda items are related to the Sheriff's Office. Now, we make a big effort to make sure all the money, as much of the money that we spend as possible is from outside sources. As you three know, we're the smallest county in Arizona geographically. We have high unemployment rate. We have a small tax base. So we consider it to be part of our due diligence to apply for grants and to get as much money as possible from outside sources. So when you see an agenda item that says requested by the Sheriff, by the Sheriff's Office, and it has a dollar amount next to it, quite often it is from an outside source and we're required by law to have that money accepted into the county by the Board. So we put it on the agenda and then you approve the acceptance of that money. It may be a grant from the Governor's Office of Highway Safety or from the Forest Service or from Mariupolsa Community Health Center, a lot of different sources of grants that we use for patrol, for our dispatch center, a lot of sources of funding. So that's just part of our due diligence. We don't have a dedicated grant writer, but we do, our command staff is always looking for opportunities to find other grants. Just give you a quick snapshot of our organization. You've seen the giant building. I invite you all to come over for a tour to actually see what it's like on the inside, to tour the jail, to tour the 911 Dispatch Center, to see our records department, our Criminal Investigations Division, our patrol section. Now, when you look at that building when the public or when you look at the building, you see this big giant two-story building. What you may not realize is almost all of that is the jail. Very little of that is the Sheriff's Office. About 30% of that building is the Sheriff's Office. The whole upstairs, the whole upper half is all the jail. Half of the lower half is the jail. So actually, the Sheriff's Office itself is a small space. Also, we are not a, as far as manpower goes, we're not a big agency. We have 40 authorized sworn deputy positions and that includes our detectives and our patrol officers and the command staff as well. Right now, we have 38 on board and we're down two. So that covers seven days a week, 24 hours a day, all the calls that come in from dispatch. It covers sick days, vacation days, training days. So you have, right now, 38 individuals responding to all the 911 calls and doing all the public service and patrol for the entire county, 24 hours a day, seven days a week. I'm not going to do a complete breakdown of all the others, but some of the bigger, other bigger positions are detention officers, authorized 34. We have 30 on board, booking clerks, authorized eight, have five on board, dispatch, authorized 11. And we're down somewhat. If you look at our organization, roughly half of the employees are in the jail. Half of the employees are in operations, which is everything else. So the jail is a big part of our manpower. So more or less, we're authorized 107 positions and we're always down some. There's always some people that have retired or changed jobs and then we're bringing more people onboard. So that's pretty much what I wanted to get across today, a snapshot of what we do. Like when you see our things on the agenda. Sometimes it's general funds, the general fund, county general fund that we spend money out of, but we try whenever possible to do other sources of money. And let me just look at my notes here. Yep, you're welcome to come by for a tour anytime. And also, if you want presentations on individual aspects, we can put on the agenda to do a presentation on, say, just the jail. And then we could have Commander Marquez, the gentleman on the right there, come in with his staff and do a presentation just on how the jail works. Detention officers, booking clerks, how we do our intake, how we get reimbursed by agencies, federal government, state government. We get reimbursed when we take their prisoners. I think that's about it. And just a final note, this is not related to the Sheriff's Office. This is no critique of the outgoing Board members or the new Board. This is not a critique. It's just a comment that I've noticed from talking to the public and the media. People like to hear discussion from the Board members. Like say if there's an item that has a discussion area, you may already know how you're going to vote. It may be obvious to you how you're going to vote. But the public likes to hear discussion. If it's just motion to approve and then approve on something that's maybe a slightly contentious issue, the public and the media likes to hear what you're thinking, what your thoughts are. Even if it's obvious to you and you're all going to vote yes, they like to hear discussion. So that's just some advice for the incoming Board and it's no critique of the outgoing Board. I hear the same commentaries about the Pima Board of Supervisors, Tucson City Council, just in general. The public and the media likes to know what you're thinking when you approve an item. So we're not talking consent, consent agenda there, just things maybe like new topics in front of the Board. You may know already, you're diligent in your job. You look at what you're going to do on that issue. You made up your mind and you know, I know how I'm going to vote on this issue. But for the benefit of the public and the media, they like to hear discussion. So that's just a little bit of advice. Sometimes you'll hear the media making comments like that, not just in our local government, but other local governments, like what was the thought process? Why was there no discussion on this? So that's just a little general bit of advice based on what I've heard from the public that, and the media, that they like to hear discussion on items like what was your rationale for voting yes or voting no? Thank you. That's all I have.
Sheriff. Mr. Paz.
If I may respond to Sheriff? Acceptable?
Yeah.
Yes. First of all, I visited yesterday and I want to say thank you very much for the discussion that we had. I'm very excited about the cameras, the body cameras. That's something that I know has been discussed in the past and I'm very happy that we have that in motion now. So thank you. And I do look forward to a tour and a visit. So I'll be reaching out. Thank you.
Oh, definitely. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Members of the Board, Members of the public. Bear with me, it's my first time up here, so I am a little nervous, but I am here to provide everybody an update with, for the Treasurer's Office. And I want to start by first introducing our new Chief Deputy Treasurer, Jeanette Rojas. So Jeanette. So, Jeanette, if you can stand, I'll have you stand. Yes, Jeanette comes with experience from the banking industry as well, over eight years with the bank. So, we will definitely make a great team. We've already been working together for the past month and definitely making more significant change and strides within the Treasurer's Office. So, a great asset to our team. I want to provide an update on the 2024 tax payments. We're receiving some calls, you may be receiving some calls on our behalf as to why their checks have not cleared. We received over thirty thousand checks by mail. We also received walk-in traffic and we also received credit card payments over the phone. So, we are understaffed and way too much work for our staff. We were blessed with two temporary employees who definitely helped us get caught up. For check payments, we are all done up until December twenty-eighth. So, anything that we have received up to December twenty-eighth has been processed as far as check payments. Any credit card payments, we are currently working on December eighteenth. So, there is a delay, there is a lag. This is not something new. It is not because we have a new administration in there. It is simply the way of the Treasurer's Office during tax season. So, we are working really hard to get those in as soon as possible. And part of the other transitions that we have made in our office will help us rectify this in the future. An update for our PNC Bank transition, we are hopeful to be fully transitioned and over to PNC by February or March of this year. We are still working on testing checks. It involves every entity who issues out checks to send sample checks to PNC for testing for the proper MICA readings and all of specifications that they require. We've gone back and forth. We actually have a connection this Wednesday because we are a little frustrated that they keep rejecting one entity's checks. So, we are at our last straw with that. But that is literally the only thing that is holding up the transition from JP Morgan to PNC Bank at this time. With PNC, we've ordered scanners, check scanners, so we've brought them in-house, will now be processing all of our deposits in-house, which will alleviate the delay in the check processing payments as well going forward. We've also received and have installed our SafePoint machine, which is pretty much like an ATM machine. We will deposit all of our cash into that machine and it is automatically deposited into our bank account. Once a week, Loomis will come, open up that SafePoint machine and withdraw the cash and take it to the bank for verification. So, those two, the check scanners and the SafePoint machine will make everything more smooth, more seamless, and a lot more efficient and quick for everybody. Western Alliance is our savings provider, who we've switched from JP Morgan. They are strictly our savings provider, so they are definitely the right choice that we could have made, earning a significant amount of interest, very different, almost triple the amount we were earning with Chase, so definitely recuperating some of our assets that way. We've initiated our transition over from UBS Financial to Principal Custody and that happened this week where all of our assets were transferred. So, over fifteen million dollars were transferred from Principal Custody over to, no, from UBS, I'm sorry, to Principal Custody, who will definitely be able to take care of us as they should, as they focus and emphasize on government entity investments. Our tax lien sale, I might not be very liked after I make this comment, but it is okay. We are evolving at the Treasurer's Office and we've decided to move the taxing sale from in-person to online. That will be on February thirteenth through realauction.com. We will provide more information on the Treasurer's website as to how you can access that realauction.com, how you register, and all of the auction will happen through them. We will no longer be hosting an in-person auction. The publication to the newspaper will be done, will be sent to Nogales International within this week, hopefully by the end of today. And that will be published in the newspaper before January thirty-first or on January thirty-first. Another update, our treasurer system to CW Harris. We met with one of the leaders yesterday, provided some more hopes that we will hopefully be fully implemented into the new treasurer system April seventh of this year. We're hopefully not expecting any other delays. At this point, we, or I, will pull the trigger and say we are just going to transition, move forward with the new system regardless of any other counties having already implemented or not. So, we are working on that. Treasurers, and then a few more other updates that we've added to our office kind of for mitigating risks, safekeeping. Our treasurer's receipt process has changed for most parts. All entities are participating with the exception of one. Have pending meetings with those. Entities that do not decide to participate in the mandatory changes that Treasurer's Office has implemented will have to sign indemnification forms to release us of any harm. The processes that we are putting in place are for a reason and some of these are non-negotiables. One of these being the treasurer's receipt was a non-negotiable, so I'm going to work with that entity in hopes that we can get them to jump on board before we go to the indemnification process. But the process was changed to, we used to receive wire transfers. We used to send out that information over to the entities for them to claim their funds and deposit their money into their funds. That's not how it should be done because they should be providing us their treasurer's receipt with their account information on it for processing as we, at the Treasurer's Office, take directives from each of the entities. We do not do it at our own discretion. So, we've asked all entities to provide us with their treasurer's receipts for processing of their deposits, just like you would go to a bank. The banker teller will not complete your deposit slip. We are the same, we're the county bank and we will not complete your deposit slips for you or your withdrawal slips. For any checks issued out within the Treasurer's Office, there is a check log that's been created, so everything needs to be input in there by the individual who is requesting that check. They need to provide the supporting documentation of why we are issuing that check and to whom, to the person who is in charge of issuing checks for that week. Once we get the check issued, the third person will add it into a check mail log register so that we are keeping track of every check that is being issued out of the Treasurer's Office. And I believe that was it. Any questions on the updates or changes that we've made?
Gentlemen, I just personally want to thank you for the update, number one. Number two, for your due diligence as well.
Of course, my pleasure. Thank you, guys.
Your staff.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other departments? Mr. Vamos, Happy New Year. Can you do me a favor? Get together with Ms. Maleno and set up a date. She's taking us all out to eat. Okay? It's an unwritten rule, right, Mr. Reese?
It wasn't announced.
It didn't announce it, man. It doesn't count.
It's an unwritten rule. I'll ask legal, they'll make the decision. Moving on, at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to recess general session and move into flood control.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item one, morning, y'all.
Good morning. Good morning, Chairman Malena, Supervisor Fanning, Chavez. My name is Alan Sanchez and I'm the flood plan coordinator. And today, I'm going to give you an update on some of our projects and some other rainfall and record-keeping things. I'd like to start off with the rainfall. We are below average for the month of December in the Nogales area. Average December rainfall for the area is one point four inches and we've received approximately point zero four. Rainfall for the calendar year was fourteen point six inches. Average annual rainfall for the Nogales area is eighteen inches. And Santa Cruz County is currently in a moderate drought. Moving on to some of our housekeeping, we received sixty-four flood hazard information sheets in December, approximately twenty-six hundred in the calendar year of 2024. Of the twenty-six hundred flood reports, fifteen hundred were building permit reviews. We received five flood plan use permit applications in December with a total of one hundred and fifty-seven for the year. Site review applications, we received two this year, drainage complaints. The district received one drainage complaint in December with thirty-five for the calendar year. So, housekeeping. On to the projects update. What I like to do is do like a monthly update of important items that we've done during the month. And so, starting off with the Ephraim Canyon Project, which is a retention-detention pond that's just downstream of the Mariposa Port in Ephraim Canyon. The county met with DEMA on Thursday, December nineteenth, 2024, to discuss progress to date with additional team members not present in the November meeting. There was a discussion about project tracking, project progress, and new information provided on how quarterly reports should be filled out moving forward. An updated scope of work needs to be submitted once a new applicant authorized representative is named and approved by the county. That's for Ephraim Canyon. Moving on to our Patagonia Regional Flood Project, Phase One. The consultant, Kimberly Horn, is currently finalizing the Phase One Existing Conditions Report. Once completed, the report will be made available to stakeholders. The county has begun discussing moving the project forward to Phase Two, pending funding opportunities. Phase Two being more of a structural approach to some of the flooding in Patagonia. So, that's it for project updates. And at this point, the Patagonia Regional Flood Committee hasn't been meeting. They're going to be meeting in January, mid-January. And as of today, we did not get a report from the city of Nogales.
Okay. So, no report from the city of Nogales and no report from town of Patagonia. Now, I'll open it up to public comment. Any one from the public wishing to add a comment or a question? Okay, seem none. At this time, actually, we have item five, Discussion Possible Action to Approve Resolution Number Twenty-Twenty-Five-Dash-Zero-One Designating the Public Works Director as the applicant's agent for the pre-disaster mitigation grant number PDMC-Dash-PJ-Dash-Zero-Nine-Dash-AZ-Dash- Twenty-Nineteen-Dash-Zero-Zero-One EMF-Dash-Twenty-Twenty-PC-Zero-Zero-One-Four for the Ephraim Canyon Project. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve. Well, actually, would you give us a little information on that, please?
I'm sorry, I'm not familiar with your request.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, I could ask some of the questions. So, the grant that you have designated a person on the grant, it was me, the public supervisor. Since then, it's been to Leonard Fung, so that's what she made. He's the one that's working with Daisy Dean.
Any other questions?
Sure.
Okay. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Bless you.
Bless you.
At this time, I'd like to adjourn flood control and move into jail district. I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn flood control and move into jail district.
So moved.
Second. Go ahead. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Item one, Discussion Possible Action Authorizing to Fill Vacant Detention Book Clerk Position. This is a budgeted item, right?
Mr. Chairman, it is a budgeted item.
Okay. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion.
Move to authorize to fill the vacant detention booking clerk position.
Any second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Now, item two, Discussion Possible Action to Approve Quotations Number Q-Dash-Zero-One-Six-Eight-Six-Dash-Three Agreement with Genesis Resource Inc. for Jail Employee Entrance Key Watchers in the Amount of Seventeen Thousand, Eight Dollars and Sixty-Two Cents. Sheriff? Just give us a little information on?
Yes, Chairman Malena. This is moving us from a manual key control system in the jail to an automated, trackable key control position. As you can imagine, if you work in a detention center, you come to work for your shift and you may be working in the intake area or in the control tower that controls the doors and whatnot. So, there are keys that are unique to each position. This expenditure comes out of jail district funds, not out of the general fund, and it allows us to have a device that has a number code that each employee punches in to get the keys dispensed to them for the particular area they're going to work on their shift. And then it's trackable and it's accountable rather than just a manual word of mouth like Officer So-and-so has the keys to the intake room or something. It's a trackable electronic system that shows where all our keys are that are pertaining to the jail.
Thank you. Any questions, gentlemen? At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve.
Move to approve. Any second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Okay. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn jail district and move into general session.
Move to approve. Any second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. We are now in the consent agenda. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve consent agenda.
Move to approve consent agenda. Any second.
I have a motion and a second and under discussion. I just want to thank Representative Contralor Hernandez. She was able to gather some funds for us for item six and item seven, I believe, and I think there was other items that we approved last week. I want to thank her for her work for Santa Cruz County. And any other discussion or?
Yes, I'd like to, I'm looking forward to number five, the Community Health Needs Assessment. I'm looking forward to seeing the results of that.
Perfect. Okay. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Okay. I think we have everything all taken care of. Last item on the agenda is item J, adjournment.
Move to adjourn. Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
We are now adjourned. Thank you, gentlemen.